We got it now, yes, okay. Good evening, everybody. This is the May 9th, 2018 meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown. We are going to start it with a pledge of allegiance and we ask that you all feel free to join in.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Board. The Planning Department would like to recommend the following items be recessed because the applicant is not ready to be heard at this time. Under zoning petitions, number one, 2012-04 Storey Book Homes, Nessconsete; number two, 2012-02 Carlson Associates, Kings Park; number three, 2010-06 KVC Holdings; under waiver requests, four, number 773 Scholar States Comac; five, number 911A Glen Hole Northern, St. James; under 280A application, Lisetta Street; and under final subdivision, number 1136 Map of Open Meadow, Fort Solongo.
Is there anybody present who wishes to be heard in any of the matters that were just read regarding which the Planning Department is recommending a recess? Seeing none emotion on those matters, please.
I move that recess matters 127 as read.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So recessed.
The next item, number eight, Performance Bond Extension, Garden Gate. The applicant did not pick up the signs, so we'll have to contact him again and recess it.
I guess we could do that without date because he's going to have to repost it?
We can do it to...we advertise in the news, but he still supposed to sign, so we can do it till next meeting.
Do we have enough time to get done by then? All right, so the next meeting is what, two weeks?
Yeah.
May 23rd?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
May 23rd.
As indicated, the applicant hasn't picked up the signs, so a motion to recess this matter to the May 23rd meeting.
I move that we recess a matter of 1039 Map of Garden Gate at St. James and move that we recess the public hearing to the May 23rd, 2018 meeting of the Planning Board.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? So recessed.
The next item is a telecommunications application, TC 2018-02 SMSA Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless. Number one, reason for report. The Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on May 9th, 2018, to consider the above referenced application for a special exception for a personal wireless service facility pursuant to chapters 242 and 322-30.3b of the Smithtown Town Code. The applicant is NY SMSA Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless, care of Amato Law Group, PLLC 666 Old Country Road, Suite 901, Garden City, New York, 11530. The site is polygon shaped parcel developed the one-story medical office building with related parking located at 1056 West Jericho Turnpike in Smithtown. The site currently has no wireless facilities allocated on the building. The zoning and land use, the site is zoned WSI with medical office building. To the north is WSI, which is office. South is R21 with single-family residences. East is WSI, repair garage and office, and west is WSI, retail and office. The staff report, description of proposed personal wireless service facility. The application is a propose...is a proposed to install a personal wireless service facility consisting of four wireless telecommunication panel antennas and associated equipment mounted on the roof of an existing one-story office building. A, other personal wireless service facility sites in the area are two Suffolk County Water Authority water tower installations on Wick's Path and Kings Park Road in Comac and a rooftop installation on Jericho Turnpike in Smithtown. B, the nearest three Verizon sites are located on the Suffolk County Water Authority Tower on Kings Park Road in Comac, a rooftop installation on Jericho Turnpike in Smithtown, and a rooftop installation on Middle Country Road in the Village of the Branch. One of the three locations is a multiple carrier site. Location, A, the proposed facility is not located in or near any identified avoidance areas such as a flood hazard zone, wetlands, or parks. B, the proposed facility is located in an opportunity site because the proposed personal wireless service facility antennas and related equipment would be mounted on the roof of an existing one-story retail building. C, therefore, the proposed facility meets the location standards. Sighting, A, the proposed facility meets the sighting standards because the antennas and related appurtenances would be mounted on the northeast corner of the roof, which is set back approximately 46 feet from Jericho Turnpike and approximately 52 feet from Wyandance Boulevard. The applicant is proposing to install RF transparent screening material along the roof of the building to block the antennas from view from Jericho Turnpike and Wyandance Boulevard. The RF material will be painted to match the building's facade to help reduce any visual impact. B, while the proposal does not appear to have adverse visual impacts on the surrounding area, additional screening of the proposed facility, including additional primary plantings along Jericho Turnpike and Wyandance Boulevard, may be required at the time of the site plan review. The design, A, the antennas will be mounted on poles at the northeast corner of the roof. The extensions of the antennas will be limited to six feet above the top edge of the roof to ensure the overall height of the proposal is kept to a minimum to reduce or eliminate any visual impact to the adjacent commercial properties. B, the proposed antennas are externally pole-mounted panel antennas. C, all related equipment would be installed on the roof on the north side of the building. D, the antennas and equipment will be screened from view by RF transparent screening material that will be painted to match the building's facade. E, therefore, the proposal meets the design standards. Further review of the design will be incorporated in the site plan approval process to assure that materials, color, size, screening, landscaping, et cetera, will minimize the visual impact of the personal wireless service facility panels and related equipment. Alternatives analysis, A, the application does not include proposed alternatives. B, upon review of the proposal and surrounding area, planning has no alternatives to propose. Description of attachments, attached are a map of the site and surrounding area identifying other personal wireless service facilities and scanned copies of a site plan and elevations of the proposed rooftop installation submitted with the application. Recommended decision, A, findings of fact, one, the proposal meets the location standards in that it is an opportunity site. Two, the proposal meets the sighting standards in that it is mounted on the roof of an existing structure. Three, the proposal meets the design standards in that it would be mounted on the roof of an existing structure and will not extend more than six feet above the building's roofline. Four, the proposal meets the safety standards per section 244-5D in that it meets the Town of Smithtown Building Code, which incorporates section 3108.4 of the New York State Building Code for wind loads in accordance with TIA/EAI-22, and the facility is not roof-mounted. B, the site consists of two tax parcels known as 94-3-2.1 and 2.3. Lot 2.3 is developed with a one-story office building with related parking. Lot 2.1 has been developed with related parking for the office building without an approved site plan. The Planning Department recommends approval of the application subject to the condition that the site be brought into compliance with the zoning ordinance through the site plan process prior to the building department issuing a building permit for this project. C, the Planning Department recommends closing the public hearing and reserving decision until the Department of Environment and Waterways issues a SECRA recommendation to the board.
Are you representing the applicant?
Yes.
Please state your name, address, and relationship to the applicant, attorney or some other representative.
Yes, my name is Simone Freeman of Amato Law Group, PLLC 666 Old Country Road, Suite 901, Garden City, New York, 11530. I am the attorney for the applicant, New York SMSA Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless, here to represent them on...in connection with the proposed small cell to be located at the facility...at the property, I'm sorry. Just as a matter of housekeeping, I'd like to just bring up the notice materials and also expert reports that have been prepared in preparation of tonight's meeting. We also have several experts with us that are here to give testimony regarding the report.
Okay. We have the affidavit of posting on this? Set for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. As I noted, we are here in connection with the property...
See one more, Matt?
I'm sorry?
Matt, you can put one more copy. Thank you. Go ahead.
We're here in connection with the property known as 1056 West Jericho Turnpike, Smithtown, New York, and we are proposing a small cell facility at this site. Verizon Wireless is a public utility under the laws of the state of New York. Verizon Wireless holds and maintains six federal licenses to operate its network within Smithtown and elsewhere. Verizon Wireless is respectfully requesting a Tier Two special exception approval pursuant to Town Code Section 322-30.3 Subsection B of the Town of Smithtown Code for its proposed facility at this site. As indicated in the RF reports, which were previously submitted as part of the application, there is a serious service deficiency within this area, and once the small cell facility is constructed and activated, the existing deficiencies will be eliminated. The property is situated on a busy commercial corridor that's densely developed with retail and commercial uses. It consists of approximately a half acre and is zoned wholesale and service industry. The property is located on the south side of West Jericho Turnpike at the southwest corner of West Jericho Turnpike and Wyandance Boulevard. The property is currently improved with a one-story professional office building containing medical offices and associated paved driveways, parking lots with landscaping abutting the streets and densely wooded area toward the...along, I'm sorry, along the south elevation, which is the rear elevation. Verizon Wireless is proposing to build a small cell facility, which will consist of a new RF transparent screening enclosure. The screening enclosure will be designed to match the existing building and appear as though is an extension to the existing building. The screening enclosure will conceal four panel antennas, two per sector, eight remote radio heads, four per sector, and two main distribution boxes, two per sector. In addition, there will be two global positioning satellite units that will be mounted to the southern rear elevation, as well as a safety ladder, generator, lug box, and utilities that will also be attached to the south wall. As indicated in the Planning Department memo dated May 4th, 2018, the proposed small cell facility complies with the location, sighting, design, and safety standards set forth in the wireless ordinance, and the Planning Department has recommended approval of the application. As indicated in the planning memo, pursuant to Town Code Section 242-5 Subsection A, the small cell facility complies with the town's location standards as the existing building's rooftop is considered an opportunity site. In addition, pursuant to Town Code Section 242-5 Subsection B, the proposed small cell facility complies with the town's sighting standards as it will be mounted on the rooftop of an existing building and will not project more than six feet above the building's roofline in order to reduce or eliminate any visual impact to adjacent properties. Moreover, pursuant to Town Code Section 242-5 Subsection C, the proposed small cell facility complies with the town's design standards as the antennas and associated appurtenances will be mounted behind the screening enclosure and will therefore be concealed. As previously noted, the screening enclosure will be painted to match the facade of the building and appear as an extension of the existing building, thereby further reducing the visual impact. Additionally, and as indicated in the planning report that we have submitted tonight and the one-mile visibility study, the screening enclosure will have a top height below the existing trees, overhead utilities in the area, and structure to the south of the building due to variations in elevation in the area. Further, and is illustrated in the photo simulations that were previously submitted as part of the application and prepared by APT Engineering, the screening enclosure would be set back from abutting roadways to reduce the visual impacts on both roads. In fact, as noted in the one-mile visibility study, visibility would be limited to the West Jericho Turnpike commercial corridor within the vicinity of the property and a short distance along Wyandance Boulevard. Elsewhere the screening would be completely...would be fully screened...I'm sorry, elsewhere the screening enclosure would be fully screened due to intervening vegetation, structures, and the local topography. As such, there would be limited, if any, visibility of the proposed screening enclosure from publicly accessible locations within the surrounding area to the south, southeast, and southwest. Moreover, the GPS units, cage ladder utility boxes, and additional ancillary equipment and cabling will be located in the rear of the building and will not be visible from any publicly accessible locations. In addition, the small cell facility is the minimum height required in order to remedy the existing deficiencies in service in the area and is the least intrusive means to do so. As noted in the RF report that was previously submitted as part of the application, the existing service deficiency gap is approximately .8 miles to...north and...north to south, excuse me, and one mile east to west. Finally, pursuant to Town Code Section 242-5 Subsection D, the proposed small cell facility complies with the town's safety standards and in that it's designed to meet or exceed the New York State Building Code requirements and local town requirements. In addition, it also complies with applicable FAA and FCC requirements as the maximum RF exposure is well below 10 times the permissible FCC limit. So I would like to just call up our experts just to give a brief summary of their reports and also for you to be able to ask them any questions you might have. First, I would like to call up Dan Velasco. He is a New York State licensed engineer, and he will be explaining, among other things, the sighting of the facility, the type of facility to be constructed, and the compliance with the applicable building codes.
Spell your name for our stenographer and give your business address for the record, please.
Daniel Velasco, F is in Frank, A L A S is in Sam, C O. Offices at 94 Steubin Boulevard, Nessconsete, New York, 11767. Good evening.
Good evening. Go ahead.
Okay. The...basically, the site has already been...I guess that doesn't come off...has been explained. And the only correction I think I want to make, I thought I heard you say the southwest corner, it's the southeast corner?
The...
Yeah. So I just wanted to make sure we're all in the same location. Basically, the site will consist of only four antennas, and they will both be located here as a view of the overall property. This outline that I'm pointing to is the building itself. The antennas will be in the northeast corner of the building and in the north...in the north corner of the building, because of the angle of the building and its triangular shape, all four antennas will be on the...on the view closest to Jericho Turnpike. The screening...to screen it from view will literally be around the perimeter of where the antennas are going. All of the rooftop equipment, including the radio...the RRHs, the radio heads, those are amplifiers that just help promote signals, et cetera, will all be behind the screen. The antennas themselves are roughly 55 inches tall and about seven inches thick, so they will all be behind, again, the six-foot-high screening enclosure. The equipment...further equipment, the electrical, the telephone communication that is required for the installation will all be on the back of the building, on the easterly side of the building in the back. Those units there basically consist of a telephone box, electrical box similar to which you may see on other commercial installations to house all the electrical components and telephone components. Those basically will only be about four feet above grade at its maximum height, so they're all pretty much at ground. To access the roof, there will be a 24-inch encased external staircase for Verizon Wireless technicians to come to the site, gain access to the roof, and do their diagnostic testing periodically. They come to the site roughly every four to six weeks. They spend some time at the site just to make sure everything is functioning properly, and they leave. They come in standard vehicles. There is ample room on the site for them to pull a car up, get out, take their diagnostic tools up to the roof, check what they have to check, and get out of there. Basically, that is the site in a nutshell.
What is the height of the top of the screening enclosure from the ground?
On the elevation views that are part of the exhibits that were provided, the top elevation of the panel antennas are 30 feet, 2 inches.
That's from the ground?
Correct. The top elevation of the screening enclosure is 30 feet, 8 inches, so it's...the screening enclosure is roughly six inches higher than the...than the antennas themselves. The top elevation of the parapet on the roof is at 24.8, the difference being the six feet that we referred to earlier in the presentation.
Okay. Any other questions, please, gentlemen? Okay, thank you.
Did I catch you?
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call John Ellsworth of VHB Engineering Surveying Landscaping Architecture PC. He will discuss the aesthetic planning and environmental impacts of the proposed small cell facility.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. John Ellsworth, VHB, E L L S W O R T H, 100 Motor Parkway in Hop Dog. VHB performed the visibility, one-mile visibility analysis, and we prepared the planning report. The visibility analysis, just briefly, a crew from VHB drives every public roadway within a one-mile radius to see where the proposed facility would be visible, and as indicated by counsel previously, it would only be visible along West Jericho Turnpike, about a tenth of a mile to the west, and about a half a mile to the east, and a short distance of Wyandance Boulevard.
What distance?
Of Wyandance Boulevard?
Yeah.
At less than a tenth of a mile. It's...quickly, as you go up, it gets hidden behind the trees. That's the visibility analysis. The planning report pretty much has already been described in the report from your Planning Department and by counsel, and basically it meets the standards of the code. It is not in a...an avoidance area. It is in an opportunity area. The antennas will be hidden behind screening panels that are painted to match the building, so it'll look like an extension of the building, and that's about it. I really heard what the testimony was previously, and they covered pretty much everything in our planning report.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call Michael Lynch of Lynch Appraisals, who will address the impact of the real estate values in the area.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Name is Michael Lynch. Business address, 15 Dewey Street, Huntington, New York. I'm here as a state-certified real estate appraiser to testify as to the effect of any the proposed small cell facility would have on the surrounding community. As noted, it's a...it's a one-story professional building at the southeast corner of Jericho and Wyandance Boulevard in Smithtown. The surrounding uses are you have automotive use immediately to the...to the east along Jericho. Opposite to the west is a small engine and tool retail operation. To the north are a mixed use of some residential office and vacant WSI-zoned parcels. To the northwest is another professional building, and to the northeast along Jericho Turnpike is some medical and retail strip centers. To the rear of the property, on Laurel Drive, you have single-family residences. Immediately behind the site is a wooded hillside with those homes to the rear on Wyandance Boulevard and Laurel Drive up at a higher elevation than the proposed height of the antennas and communications facility. As noted, the design of the site will be completely enclosed within RF transparent screening, so the four antennas that are proposed will be completely concealed and not visible. The antenna rays themselves will actually be pointed away from the residences to the rear. The rays...the antenna rays will be pointed to the northwest and to the northeast along Jericho Turnpike. So all in all, it's an excellent design. Again, it's completely concealed within the architecturally compatible RF screening panels, and in my estimation, should the site be approved, it will not cause any deleterious effect to nearby property values. I have several case studies that I've listed in my report of other roof-type type communications facilities in addition to other type facilities such as monopole and water tank sites, and those are outlined in my report. But again, should this facility be approved, given the opportunity site that it is on an existing structure and no new structure will be needed, I don't feel, again, if it's approved, that it'll have any adverse impact to nearby property values.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call Martin Lavine, a radio frequency engineer with C Squared Systems. He can explain the need for the small cell facility at this particular location.
You've got the gentleman coming up. He'll have to give us a hand.
Martin Lavine, L A V I N, C Squared Systems, RF consultant for Verizon, offices 65 Dartmouth Drive in Auburn, New Hampshire.
Got that?
This is simply the site itself as proposed and the nearest existing sites around it with the distances to them. Requested inventory of all the sites in the Town of Smithtown plus a one-mile buffer around it, and this is the subject site here in black.
Sorry, I'm losing the...
Oh, sorry.
Try to speak into the mic.
Pull it out.
You can pull it out.
I couldn't do that.
You gotta...you maybe hold with one hand. There you go. All right.
These are the proposed sites in black. Blue sites are inside the town. Red sites are just in the buffer outside the town. This is the...our network as it sits. Green and blue indicate reliable in-building and in-vehicle coverage respectively. White indicates areas that don't have reliable coverage at the moment. There's the proposed site again. And as a solution alone there to extend coverage along Jericho Turnpike, you can see the site hooks up completely with existing coverage and carries us out to this area here, giving us our four-tenths of a mile or so of additional coverage along that route there.
Thank you.
And last but not least, I'd like to call Dave Collins of Pinnacle Telecom Group to testify as to the health and safety issues, that this communication will...and that this communication will comply with the FCC standards.
Good evening, Dave Collins, C O L L I N S, Pinnacle Telecom Group, 14 Ridgedale Avenue, Cedar Knolls, New Jersey. Okay. Federal government sets a standard for maximum permissible radio energy that comes from an antenna site at street level. It is an extremely conservative level, and the way we determine it for a site that is yet to be built is the FCC also provides a mathematical formula for determining the radio frequency energy levels, which you would then compare those results to what's permitted. permitted, and then, by then assess whether or not you are in compliance or would require mitigation. All right, in this particular request, there are two antenna sectors. They are the same, so the calculations would be the same for each sector, and therefore the results. We made the determination using the FCC formula. And by the way, the simplest way to describe the results would be in terms of a simple percentage. With one hundred percent being the maximum permitted level, anything less than that would be in compliance with the rules and regulations set forth by the government. So in this case, we input the data that was given to us for the site by Verizon, and made the determination that at maximum, at ground level around the site, the maximum level would be nine point one three four two percent. That's less than ten percent of the acceptable limit. That equivalently is in terms of how many times below. It is more than ten times below the limit, so we are in compliance with the federal's rules and regulations by a very wide margin. And there we are.
So basically, what you're saying is that you could multiply the amount that is going to be given off here by ten and still be under the minimum set by the government?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do any of the other board members have any questions, or?
I just got one quick one, just on, I'm trying to get the location of the building. This is the, is this the Castro? Our project?
Yes, Castro, yes, it is. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one more. It might be more appropriate for the engineer. Just can you give us the distance from where the antennas are to the south property line, which is where the residences are?
It is on the plans, and?
Approximately.
Basically, from the building to the rear property line is thirty-nine point five feet.
From the back of the building?
From the back of the building to the property line, and these antennas are in the front of the building. Where are the numbers here? Yeah, basically, from the six Wyandanch Boulevard, from, to the antennas is roughly two-hundred-and-ninety feet. The building is approximately a hundred-and-fifty feet. The antennas from ten fifty-one West Jericho Turnpike is approximately a hundred-and-eighty feet, and from five Laurel Drive is approximately a hundred-and-forty feet.
How many feet is it from where the antennas are to the south property line? I think you said it was forty feet from the back of the building to that line? So what's the length of the building from south to north, or from north to south?
The building north to south, if you recall, the building is triangular in shape roughly. At its largest dimension, with the antennas being in the front of the building, that building is approximately seventy-five feet deep. And then it's another thirty-nine feet to the, to the property line.
So roughly a hundred-and-fifteen feet from where the antennas are to the back property line?
I would say more like, I would say more like a hundred-and-five, because again, the antennas are on a slight angle, so to be conservative, about a hundred-and-ten feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to be, the property directly to the south, the six Wyandanch slopes up a great deal, so I think that accounts also for a little bit extra with the two ninety.
It would account.
Exactly.
Anybody have any questions before we ask the public if they want to comment? Okay, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on this matter? If you do, please come up to the microphone and give your name and address for the record. We should have one speaker at a time. If you're both together, you both can speak, but just one, one speaker at a time.
Okay. My name is Barbara Morris. My property is at one Bayberry Lane, which is within two-hundred feet of where this small cell facility is going to be built, and I was curious if it was called the small cell facility, because that's the type of cancer that it will cause. While I can appreciate, you know, the aesthetics and all the care taken with that, my concern, of course, is with our health. And I would certainly like to look further into this, and I'm requesting an adjournment.
Well, you don't have to actually request that, because that's what's going to happen anyway.
Okay.
For anybody else who's, who is listening who wants to know, the way that it usually works here in Smithtown is that our Department of Environment and Waterways has to put in a memo on the SECRAS aspects of this application, which is the State Environmental Quality Review Act.
Okay.
And the way that our DEW does it is that they like to have comments from the public first, before they put their memo in. So we don't, we don't have their memo yet.
Okay.
So we can't act on this until we get their memo. So it's not, it's not going to be voted on tonight.
And then will there be another meeting?
Well, we're gonna probably adjourn it or recess it to a specific date.
Okay.
So you'll get that when we're finished with this matter, you'll know what the new date is.
Okay. And then under the foil, how would I get a copy of the permit application and the file?
I think if there's any documents that you want, you might want to contact the planning department.
Okay.
Some of our planning staff is here now, but, you know, they have, their office is right here.
Okay.
And contact them, and they may make available to you what you want.
Okay. That's, that's it.
Mr. Flynn is our planning director. He's gonna give you some assistance.
If I could add, the federal FCC regulations partially preempt local zoning, and they forbid localities from considering health impacts if the applicant certifies that the emissions comply with the federal requirements.
Right.
So.
Well, according to my lawyer, there's, there's other ways of fighting it.
Okay.
And like I said, I'm within two-hundred feet.
Sure.
And this affects me very directly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you continue though, with what you were saying the rulings are?
I'm not familiar with the rulings. What if?
Sir, no, you can't speak, you can't speak from the audience, because everything is being taken down on the record. So if you want to speak, please feel free to come up to the microphone and give your name and address, and then you can speak then, but we have to know who's speaking.
Okay. Could you just finish then what you were saying?
Let's pretend you asked the question.
Yeah, let me believe, let me believe you asked it.
I'm not familiar with rulings. I've read the regulations, and I've read commentary about the regulations, but I haven't read any rulings.
Okay. Anything else?
Possibly if you?
You have to readdress yourself.
You have to come back up. Everything has to be done at the microphone.
Okay, sorry. I was just curious if we could maybe have some of your concerns, and possibly our expert can address them with you here on the record, if that's something that you would be interested in doing.
Well, what I'm gonna do is, after the public has finished commenting, should you wish to call back up any of your experts to address any of those comments, you're free to do that.
Yes, I, my point was more of, does she have a specific, other than just cancer in general, is there a specific question perhaps so that we can have our expert respond? That was before she sat down.
Well, I think she's, I don't know that she's prepared to go forward now, because she asked for an adjournment, so I don't think she's at that point yet.
Okay. Thank you. So I just?
I got that right?
Yes.
Okay.
So if there's somebody else that wants, it seemed like?
Yes, if anybody else wants to speak, you're welcome to speak. Come up if you have a question, a comment, but you have to give your name and address for the record, because everything's being taken down. If not, then we'll go to the next step. Anybody else wish to be heard on this?
No more questions, ma'am.
Just to clarify, according to the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six, since the FCC has promulgated a standard with respect to radio frequency emissions, and the site is well below such standard, this board or any other board is preempted from considering RF emissions with respect to any zoning application. So it would be the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six, somebody should ask specific. Okay. So with that, if the board has no additional questions, does the board have any additional questions?
Do you want to call back up any of your experts to address anything that was said? I mean, you can, you don't have to, but it's up to you.
No, I don't think the comments were specific enough.
Okay. Well, now we just have, nobody else in the public wants to be heard on it, so the planning department's memorandum recommends that we close the public hearing to allow the DEW to give the memo. However, if we close the public hearing, there will be no more public comment. So I think it might be better to keep the public hearing open, so that the public can comment.
So we recess it.
Do you have any, Mr. Flynn, I know your memo says we close it, but I think that members of the public may wish to comment, that may not be ready to comment right now, and I think they should be given the opportunity to comment, should they wish to do that. So if we close the public hearing, there won't be any more comment.
Is the purpose of not closing the hearing so they can comment on the recommended SECRAS determination at a later date?
Well, I, I think that the, one member of the public who spoke, I don't know that her comments are going to be limited to just the SECRAS.
Right, okay. My suggestion then is DEW normally wants to read all of the comments, all of the testimony, and to avoid a catch-twenty-two.
Right, I, we've been through this before.
Right. You might want to recess the hearing to a date certain.
Correct.
To allow the testimony to end, and then DEW will take it from there.
Yes, I just want to give anybody who wants to be heard the opportunity to do that. So they may, in other words, the matter may have to be on twice more. Once for the, any additional public comment, once the people who may want to comment get a chance to look into it, and then, then DEW, once all the public comments are in, will then give us their memo, and then we'll vote on it. That, Mr. Flynn, that, is that, we're on the same page here?
Yes, yes.
Okay. You understand, you've been here before. You know, our DEW waits until all the public comments are in, then they give us our memo, so sometimes applicants have to come back.
Yes, absolutely.
One extra time, but it is what it is.
Yes.
That's, our DEW prefers to have all the public comments in the record first, before they give us their memo on the SECRAS.
Hmm.
Okay, so I guess we can just do to the next meeting.
That's what I would.
Go further, who waiting for the memo, but next, well, we'll have to ask council if everybody can, if she can make it then. Next meeting is May twenty-third, right?
Mm-hmm.
May twenty-third, then June thirteenth is the one after that.
Thank you.
That should be, I think we have another hearing actually on that night, so most likely all of us will be here again anyway.
Okay.
Won't be so bad.
So May twenty-third is the date of the next hearing.
Of the next hearing.
If that's okay with you to make it back, we'll put it over to May twenty-third. That way, anybody in the public who wishes to look into things before they comment, so they can comment the way they wish to, will comment then. All the comments will be given then, and unless there's a reason to continue with further, the hearing will be closed then.
Hmm.
And then we'll wait for our DEW to give us our SECRAS recommendation, and then we'll go to the next step.
Sure.
Okay? So with that being said, is there a motion to recess this matter till May twenty-third, two thousand eighteen, meeting of the board?
In the matter of special exception petition, TC two thousand eighteen dash zero-two, NY SMSA Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless, I move that we recess the public hearing to the May twenty-third, two thousand eighteen, meeting of the planning board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? None? So recess, and the record should reflect that the public hearing remains open. It will be continued on that night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is for preliminary subdivision, Jiradine LLC and St. James to adopt or revise SECRAS positive declaration. At the April eleventh, two thousand eighteen, planning board meeting, the planning board issued a SECRAS positive declaration, determination of significance requiring the preparation of an environmental impact statement for the subdivision known as number eleven seventy-eight Map of Jiradine LLC, of which was resolution number nineteen dash two thousand eighteen. At that meeting, the supervisor of the town of Brookhaven requested that public scoping be conducted in accordance with the environmental impact statement. The board did not act upon that request at that time. Per the Department of Environment and Waterways memo dated May second, two thousand eighteen, scoping is optional under SECRAS and may be initiated by either the lead agency or the project sponsor. In consideration of the town of Brookhaven's request, the Department of Environment and Waterways recommends that the planning board adopt a revised resolution, reissuing the SECRAS positive declaration, and requiring that scoping of the environmental impact statement be conducted in accordance with the provisions of SECRAS six NY-CRR section six one seven point eight. The reasons supporting the SECRAS positive declaration will remain unchanged from the Department of Environment and Waterways prior recommendation, and the only change is that the requirement that public scoping be conducted. In accordance with the Department of Environment and Waterways' recommendation, the following resolution is offered for the board's consideration, Planning Board Resolution Number Plank two thousand eighteen, Recommended Revised SECRAS Declaration for number eleven seventy-eight Map of Jiradine LLC, whereas the planning board conducted a public hearing on April eleventh, two thousand eighteen, to consider the adoption of a SECRAS determination, whereas the planning board closed the public hearing pertaining to SECRAS and issued a SECRAS positive declaration on April eleventh, two thousand eighteen, whereas the supervisor of the town of Brookhaven at the April eleventh, two thousand eighteen, public hearing requested that public scoping of the environmental impact statement be conducted, and whereas the Department of Environment and Waterways considered the scoping request and has recommended that scoping be required for the preparation of an environmental impact statement, statement in accordance with the provisions of SECRAS six NY-CRR section six one seven point eight. Now therefore be first resolved, that the planning board hereby rescinds resolution number nineteen dash two thousand eight, adopted at the April eleventh, two thousand eighteen, planning board meeting, in which a SECRAS positive declaration was issued for the subdivision known as number eleven seventy-eight Map of Jiradine LLC. And second resolve, that the planning board, after due study deliberation of the subject record, hereby issues a SECRAS positive declaration, determination of significance, environmental impact statement is required, and requires that scoping of the EIS be conducted in accordance with six NY-CRR section six one seven point eight. In the matter of the application for subdivision approval by Jiradine LLC for number eleven seventy-eight Map of Jiradine LLC, for the following reasons. A, the proposal has the potential to result in a significant adverse visual, community-character-related impacts upon unique and highly valuable cultural resources, including but not limited to the adjacent ramp twenty-five A historic corridor and Nostpon Road historic corridor. B, the proposal has the potential to result in significant adverse drainage and wastewater-related impacts upon unique and highly valuable environmental resources, including but not limited to the onsite near DEC Map freshwater wetlands in the nearby Stony Brook Harbor. C, full details and calculations must be provided and reviewed to ensure that the proposed non-standard drainage system will not result in any discharge to the site wetlands and will not exacerbate existing local flooding conditions. D, full details and calculations must be provided and reviewed to ensure that the proposed sewage treatment plant will not result in any significant adverse impacts upon quality or quantity of surface waters or groundwater. Proposed location of the sewage treatment plant must be evaluated relative to the subwatershed's wastewater plan, groundwater contributing error, so as to minimize potential adverse impacts upon Stony Brook Harbor. E, the proposal appears to be inconsistent with the draft master plan and the planning board recommendations regarding the subject parcel, including but not limited to the proposed uses of the subdivided parcels, the depth of the proposed buffer from Route twenty-five A, and the amount of open space to be preserved on-site. F, proposal has the potential to result in significant adverse traffic impacts upon local roadway network with associated secondary impacts upon air quality and public safety by adversely impacting emergency vehicle response times. The feasibility and effectiveness of all proposed traffic mitigation measures must be fully described, documented, and subjected to public review. G, plans for the remediation of onsite arsenic contamination and the prevention of future industrial or medical contamination must be fully described, documented, and subjected to public review. H, cumulative impacts associated with the future development of Stony Brook University's adjacent property, particularly in light of Jiradine's stated intent to reopen the Long Island Railroad grade crossing so as to allow the free flow of traffic between two properties, must be fully described, documented, and subjected to public review. I, growth including impacts associated with the potential redesign of the proposed sewage treatment plant with additional capacity to accommodate the searing of the St. James Business District must be fully described, documented, and subjected to public review. J, the viability of the project as well as the specific limitations which the applicant may be willing to impose upon proposed uses and site design parameters such as building height, floor area, limits of clearing, et cetera, must be fully described, documented, and subjected to public review. K, alternatives to the proposed action must be identified, considered, and subjected to public review. At a minimum, these alternatives include, one, no action, two, public acquisition for open space preservation, three, development of the subject parcel in full conformance with the draft master plan and planning board recommendations, including but not limited to three-hundred-feet-deep buffers, fifty percent open space preservation, prohibitions of specific uses. And the applicant has submitted the affidavit of post.
Is there anybody here on behalf of the applicant? Is there anybody here who wishes to be heard on this? Otherwise.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, Richard Zappolsky, Cameron Engineering, one-seventy-seven Crossways Park, uh, Woodbury, New York. We don't have a presentation tonight, we understand that the, uh, board is looking to add, revise the, uh, resolution from last hearing to add the public scoping document.
Correct, we're gonna have the, we're gonna go through the public scoping process.
That's all we have.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the audience wish to be heard on this matter? Dave, you want to mention something, Mr. Flynn, about the public scoping process and how people may participate in that if they wish to?
I'd be glad to, I, I just think there's a typo here.
Okay.
On item I, it says growth including impacts, I think it's supposed to say growth inducing impacts.
Item I, okay, I'm sorry.
Sort of standard word, I think it says growth inducing.
All right, so then, uh, we'll, we'll deem the memo, uh, at item I to read, the word including to be changed to the word...
Inducing.
Inducing. So when the memo is, when the resolution is voted on, uh, the memo will be, the resolution will be voted on with the word inducing instead of including in second, the second word in item I. Thank you.
With respect to the public wanting to comment on this scoping, I have to be honest, I'm not sure how DEW will handle that. Do you?
I think there were gonna, uh, there was gonna be some type of a notice put out on our town website.
Okay, is that the only form of notice? I mean, I'm not...
There might be other notices they might be putting out.
If anybody's here watching this on the computer, on TV, uh, please feel free to call the planning department during normal business hours.
Or check the town website, I believe something is gonna be posted there.
We'll find out.
Yes, I believe it's gonna be posted, with the time period and the comment. Okay.
Just a quick question, um, the purpose of scoping is to narrow the issues and ensure that the draft DIS will be a concise, accurate, and complete document. Now, who is initiating this? Is it the applicant, or is it going to be the lead agency in this case, or how, how do we begin to proceed in this?
Well, the DEW takes the lead.
All right.
Um, on behalf of the lead agency, um, the DEW kind of, um, sets the stage, sets the agenda, um, and in this situation, there's an applicant, not every scoping involves an applicant, sometimes...
It could be sometimes initiated by the applicant.
The town, or the...
And then overseen by the lead agency.
Uh, I haven't seen that in the town of Smithtown.
Okay.
I guess it could happen in New York, um, I was going to say a little bit, uh...
My question is, who's gonna set, set these parameters, uh, because some things are gonna receive more review than others, and some things that some residents feel are of valid concern may not be adequately addressed, I'm just curious as to how, the methodology here.
Yeah, my, my understanding based on past practice is DEW, um, will make the determination with respect to the scope of the EIS. I mean, certainly the purpose of scoping is to avoid waste, to avoid wasted time and effort, and not to create an encyclopedia, um, of inform- information that's not...
Useful.
Yeah, useful for making a decision, um...
Okay.
So, the DEW normally has always taken the lead.
Right.
Listen to the public, listen to an applicant, um, and I guess the public would include adjacent municipalities.
Yeah, I believe they'll be do- I'm sure they'll be notified.
Thank you.
All right, well then, uh, it's not really a public hearing, so we just need a motion on the resolution.
Do we first have to rescind?
It's all, it's all part of the resolution, I believe, it's rescinded in the resolution.
Okay, um...
There was a public hearing scheduled.
This is, this is a public hearing.
Oh, oh, I thought it, was it noticed? I thought it was, I thought it was, I was under the impression that it wasn't noticed.
I, I thought it was.
Well, you know what?
Yeah.
In, in to the extent that it was noticed, then we have a motion to close the public hearing. If there is no public hearing, then it doesn't matter.
Yeah, I think it is.
Okay.
Okay, in the matter of number eleven-seventy-eight map of Jaredine LLC, I move that we adopt the resolutions as read, but changing the second word in item five, including...
Item I.
I, I, I'm, I'm sorry, item I, um, to be changed, uh, include, the word including to be changed to inducing, and otherwise, um, according to the recommendation of the planning department.
So modified, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none? Those resolutions are adopted.
Resolutions, actually.
In the matter of eleven-seventy-eight map of Jaredine LLC, I move that we adopt the resolutions as read, but changing the second word in item five, including...
Item I.
I, I, I'm, I'm sorry, item I, um, to be changed, uh, include, the word including to be changed to inducing, and otherwise, um, according to the recommendation of the planning department.
So modified, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none? We're adjourned.